Good evening. Before we begin our official meeting, we always have a thought that's on our minds. And unfortunately, we had a shooting of murder last weekend in our community. And the tragic, so senseless, with an awful lot of people. We'd like to thank our first responders who were there and God bless them. They go through things we can't imagine. So the next minute or so, we'll have a reflection. We have first responders, eligible serving, neighboring community officers, and the victims of both families of both. So it's a fundamental silence, good choice to think reflect on their needs and helping all of us get through this tragedy. Thank you.
Great. Seven o'clock. I'd like to call the March meeting to order, please.
I would please just do the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. This is Devin. Yes, Mr. Carrera?
Here.
Mr. Suddles?
Here.
Just want to let you all know that this meeting is being recorded for informational purposes. I'd like to ask the trustees for a motion to accept the minutes where the meetings held in February 2025.
Oh, you made a motion to accept the minutes noted in February 2025.
Second motion is presented.
And roll call, Mr. Suddles?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
This is Devin. And I'd like to ask the trustees for a motion to accept the payment of the bills from January in the amount of $259,556.63.
I'll make the motion that the better bills come out than this in January. Two hundred and ninety-nine, fifty-six, sixty-three.
What about the pockets?
I'll show you the thing.
Yeah.
One second.
And Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
This is Devin. Yes, and Mr. Suddles?
Yes.
I'd also like to ask the trustees for a motion to accept the last financials that I gave you, which was about the way we came up or something like that.
When, when were they? Were they prior to the next meeting?
Yes, they, yeah, as soon as I did the bank reconciliation, I'll give you.
Okay, I make a motion to accept the financial statements.
Second motion.
And roll call, this is Devin. Yes, Mr. Suddles?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Communication, it appears that there's nothing on the board. All right, this part of the meeting, we stop and talk about if anyone has any concern or issues with comments on the agenda. Forward to Chief Pacific.
Director man. For the month of February, your officers responded to 605 calls for service. We wrote eighty-five reports, twenty of them were crash reports, sixty-five incident reports. We had twenty-five arrests, one was drug-related, two theft, B and E or burglary-related, four assault, domestic violence, protection order violations, four fleeing, resisting, or obstructing arrests, and five weren't arrests. Your officers issued forty traffic citations. Either those were equipment-related offenses, and thirty-two were moving-related offenses. Calls we received, we had one burglary or B and E report, three assaults or domestic disturbances, two criminal trespass, six vandalism or criminal damaging, two theft, three identity theft. We had five threats menacing on telephone harassment complaints, one drug overdose, six disturbances or fights, five suspicious activity calls, five suspicious person calls, and eleven suspicious vehicle calls. We had twenty parking or traffic-related complaints, assisted fourteen disabled motorists, had fourteen animal complaints, and twenty-three alarm drops. Your officers patrol 11,840 miles and used 864 gallons of gas. We had twenty-one hours of reimbursed overtime and sixty-nine hours of regular overtime for a total of ninety hours of overtime.
Is there any other questions on the report?
No, I don't.
Two things on the agenda here. First is, I would like a motion to allow the purchase of new department handguns from Atwell's Police and Fire Equipment in Haynesville, Ohio. We'll be utilizing the trade-in of our current firearms and a current credit with the vendor for costs not to exceed $2,500.
Is there anything over there, Chief, or is that just what we talked about in the department meeting?
That's just what we talked about in the department meeting. I can explain a little bit if need.
No, no need. I just didn't, everything's there that needs to be placed in motion. I'll make a motion to purchase for the police department, new department handguns from Atwell's Police and Fire Equipment in Haynesville, Ohio, utilizing the trade-in of current firearms and the current credit with the vendor for costs not to exceed $2,500.
I'll second the motion as presented.
Thank you.
And roll call, Mr. Suddles?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Mrs. Devin? Yes.
The other item I have is, we have set the date for the Easter egg hunt this year. It's going to be April nineteenth. We are still accepting donations. Could be anything, monetary, toy items, candy, eggs. We also can use volunteers. So if anyone wants to help out or offer services, just contact Tabitha, the main office, or myself, and we'll gladly use you. But that is, again, it's going to be April nineteenth. This is what platters and information out.
Is that in the board, Chief?
Yes, it's going to be at the township park. We have.
Thank you.
And do you have anything else?
I have nothing further.
Can I move on to the flyer report?
Thank you, Mrs. Devin. For the month of February, crews responded to a total of 178 emergency calls for service. Of those, 146 were medical, three structure fires, fourteen motor vehicle crashes, two miscellaneous fires, and seven calls for service of miscellaneous nature. Two wires were treased, reported down, four fire alarm investigations. We have mutilated the township fifteen times and went out of the township twenty-three times, and twenty times to Hartford, total, for the 178. We had 136.75 total hours of overtime for the month. We used 460 gallons of unleaded gasoline, 143.6 gallons of diesel, for a total of 603.6 gallons of fuel. Station 51 was closed 34 out of 56 times. That's all I have for my report.
Okay, is there any questions?
No.
Well, just one quick one. Any improvements for the hospitals and chairs closed? Same challenge you're facing?
Yep. Thank you. I'd like to ask the trustees for a motion to allow me to enter into a contract with Holco Roofing to make the necessary repairs and updates to the roof at Firehouse 51 for a total cost of $2,600.
Chief, I know we discussed this apartment head. That, that $2,600 is going to cover?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yeah, that's, that's. That's going to cover the repairing the current leaks, rebooting all of the penetrations, and going through and updating all of the other items for the roof. I'm not sure what all there is up there, but they're, they're quote encompassed.
Are you both, and we discussed this earlier, you both got with one?
I am. Maybe you'll work for us. That's, that's some members.
Yeah, that's pretty careful.
Did he take the original or?
The original to the building. I'm not sure.
Nope, I'm okay with it.
I'm making a motion to allow the fire chief to enter into a contract with Holco Roofing to make necessary repairs and updates to the roof at Firehouse 51, which is on Addison Road, for a total cost of $2,600. I'll second the motion as presented.
And roll call, this is Carrera?
Yes.
This is Devin. Yes, Mr. Suddles?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I have for this meeting.
Okay, thank you, Chief. All right, road, cemetery, and Harvard Court. My supervisor, Breiler.
Thank you, Shannon. Road report for the month of February, we had regular hours worked, 669. We had 114 overtime hours. That was all ashing, plow. Total hours worked, 783. Of that, we used 15 administrations, mostly just meetings and road project type stuff. 140 routine road maintenance. We had 367 in the ice and plow. We traveled 1,185 miles. Used 412 tons of mix. That comes out to about .35 tons per mile. Equipment mades and repairs, we had 120 hours. We worked on Unit One, Unit Two, or both the grain machine, or all three, the bear. One's a tandem axle, a grain machine, we had two of same wax. Thirty-two hours tree cutting, and that's was areas that we're going to be paving in the 2025 road program. Cemetery, we had 30 hours, four cremation burials, and three regulated turning burials. Thirty-five hours of shop time, sort of information, three hours, that was primarily on wood. Wildwood drive, safety training, we had four hours. Park, we had two hours, just ride through inspections, just make sure none of the water leaks, or that kind of stuff. Road department used 56 gallons of unleaded fuel and 502.1 gallons of diesel fuel. Cemetery used 45.7 gallons of gas, and Park used 22 gallons of gas. That's all I have for the report. Do you have anything on that?
I got a question, I know we've touched on it, you went on again this weekend a little bit. Is our salt good, mate?
Yes, I think. Looking ahead at the weather, I don't think, you know, something's changed drastically.
Same as, same as.
Stone Chicks, I think.
I'm going to make sure a lot of communities are, believe it or not, you know, we had two easy winters comparatively to this one, the last one. And they're running out of salt and aggregate mixture. And Jamie forecast that well, and prepared. Because the price of salt is like the price of gas, of course. It goes up drastically.
Just thank you, you're great, great job, this one. I'd like to go hours of night and day, so thank them for the services.
Well done.
Appreciate it. I'll pass on. Item one on the agenda, we had an annual meeting with the tribal county engineers. This one is important because we have a new engineer this year, so it's a good idea. And I think, Dean, are you going, or is that day? You got invited.
I did, well, I got invited to the plan, the original.
Yeah, this is, yeah.
I'll find out.
Yeah, I can say I'm host.
It's Thursday, yeah. So it says Thursday. Figured for a day, maybe Tuesday.
At 10:00 AM, I did get the time correct, right? The day to check.
Yes.
Okay. And I, again, that, I mean, if you have, Dean, I'm clicking you. The idea is, if you have questions or things you want to bring up to the engineer, this is a one-on-one with just Brookfield Township, and the engineer, and all his staff usually is there. So if you have any, any questions at all, this is the best time to ask.
No, I'm sure we have several. Once again, a new county engineer, the programs that existed with you all, see if they still do. We've all met him, I met him at a get-together last month. He seems very willing to work with the township, so let's suggest.
Yeah. Second item I have, I just wondered if we were going to get a meeting scheduled. We probably need to sit down, just the road department to go over our upcoming road program. So we can clarify all the, we have grants coming this year. We have two projects to finish from last year. We have the storm tour project. We have some maintenance. And I did tell Dan, and I'll tell the trustees, that I did talk to Ashley from Wildwood Public Works Commission that we're not going to have to start the first payment on the loan until 2026. So the $115,000 that we set aside, we'll redirect that to. Maybe hand to this board, yeah.
I like that.
Yeah.
I'll be more honest.
Item number three. I would like to, and I don't know if you want to pick a date now, but next year, the contracts are all getting renewed, so I want to get started early, because you know how this goes. We usually, for some reason, we stuck, we say we're going to start early. I think we do, but we never, we're always on the deadline getting finished. So I'd like to get ours done as soon as possible, so I'm thinking sometime maybe in April.
We have, we have all, here's, here's the thing, this is my point of view. I don't know if that I'm sharing. I'm fine with talking about the whole contract excluding wages.
Okay.
The only reason is, it's not fair to the employees that we, we discuss. I'd like to have that across the board, consistency as possible.
You mean all three departments?
Yes, all three departments, as far as all the contracts are up.
Yeah, and we have several items that we talked about that we want to rectify and clear up.
As does do we as the ministry.
Item number four. And several years ago, we hired John Welsh. Part of his hiring was a requirement for him to get his CDL. And upon obtaining his CDL, he would be, his wage would be increased $1 per hour. He successfully completed that in February. So I would like to ask trustees to make a motion to increase his salary from $60 an hour to $17 effective. Effective March 1st.
I make a motion to decrease John Welsh's hourly rate from $16 an hour to $17 an hour due to him obtaining his commercial driver's license. This will be effective March 1st.
I'll second the motion as presented.
And roll call, this is Devin. Yes, Mr. Suddles?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
The next item. I would like to ask the trustees to make a motion to hire Edward Fabian as the seasonal part-time employee, effective March 4th, at a rate of $16 per hour. I want to start him early because Ed is a, he's a fabricator, and we need some work done on some of our equipment. So I would ask trustees, for the first month, we'll take his wages, Dana, out of the road salaries. And then once April comes, he'll be reverted back to the park, and then take his wages out of the park.
Do you don't want to do the first two months?
No, not even.
Tight, that's part of it.
And you typically, when he works at the, when he works at the park, he's 30 hours. And he works five days a week, six hours a day, only because we need somebody there every day for the bathrooms. This first month, I would ask that we can do him 32 hours. He can work four days instead of coming out. Just so you, you know, because there's no sense in him coming out five days a week and starting different times than we do. So for that first month, I would have him with the road department from Monday through Thursday, seven to three o'clock, just like.
I think those things are up to you.
Yeah.
And make the decision.
I just want to let you know so that you can. So I would ask that we should make that motion to hire him, effective, he would start March 4th, which is off.
Sure.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion, a motion to hire Edward Fabian as the park seasonal part-time employee, effective March 4th, 2025, at a rate of $16 per hour.
That's without benefits, right?
Uh, yeah, that's without benefits out. The holidays was the only thing that happened, that was already done, so that's.
I'll second the motion as presented.
And roll call, Mr. Suddles?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Mrs. Devin? Yes. You skipped over.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just noticed that. I was looking for Wayne Jarrett. I skipped over, so I'm going to back up to, I blanked through your house, but the trustees to make a motion to hire Wayne Jarrett, which has a seasonal employee for the cemetery at a rate of $16 per hour. And, and just for your information, both of these employees were here last year. So these are returning seasonal employees. And his start date, I would ask that it be April 7th. And I want to do it today because April 7th is the meeting date next month. So I kind of want to get him started before that. That's a Monday, so. And it's a different, last year, he worked 40 hours a week, it was five days, eight hours a day. Because of our, the tight budget on the cemetery, I'm going to ask that we work in four days, eight, eight hours, or 32 hours. So Monday to Thursday.
I'll make a motion to hire Wayne Jarrett for 32 hours a week, rate of $16 per hour, effective April 7th.
I'll second.
And roll call, this is, Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Mrs. Devin? Yes, Mr. Suddles?
Yes.
And I just have two more items, informational items. One is on the agenda, the other one I just thought of, so. And this is for the residents, scrap tire pickup is going to be, and I bring it up every meeting so that it gets, the information gets out there so people know. So scrap tires are going to be first Saturday in May, which is the third, I believe. Yeah, May 3rd, at the usual place, the fire function, so. Just want to reiterate that.
And I can do it every meeting, and I like to stress the fact that that's for township residents. And we're going to ask them to bring a driver's license. Only, only because we want to make sure that's, that we're getting the tires out of Brookfield Township. As with anything, if some folks try to maybe not live here, bring us some tires, so. We do quite well picking up tires. We don't need additional community to see.
It was signed from last, you were right to say.
Yeah, I mean, do you still have that? You have that science, it's about your license.
Yeah, I think I still have that.
And I'll, I'll be able to sit there and do that, so you're.
Yeah, we're trying to, I mean, I came down and.
Yeah. And just, and remember, this is just basically car tires. We don't take semi-truck tires. I think the largest size that we take is 22-inch.
Is there a limit? I don't think you say that separately.
Well, it's, yeah, it's generally 10 tires, so. You get, you're not allowed to transport more than 10 tires unless you have a hauler's command. But you can make a limit on trips. The second item is, and I was kind of going over the schedule. The clean-up for the cemetery. So Easter is late this year. 20th. So we're going to do the spring clean-up the week of the seventh. Because our, our regulations require one week, and it's certain holidays, like Mother's Day, Easter, Christmas, I think.
So the seventh meeting.
The seventh through the eleventh. April 7th through 11th. Because that's, we need a week before and a week after the holiday.
So they have to have their stuff a month prior to this?
Yeah, yeah. So I recommend just removing it for, you know, April, well, of course, the end of April, Easter, they're going to want to put stuff on, so. I can't wait too, because I'd have to wait till like the beginning of May, and then we're already cutting by then, so.
Great, so should, we should try to do this, this is always a point.
Yeah, we usually get it on the sign and on the website.
And we can do a push notification on.
A push notification, I guess.
Now, what is, what's in that? It's my work table. It's, it's. It's there, that's a very good idea.
And then maybe put a news on the book.
Correct.
Yeah, we'll try to get it.
Yeah, we have. That's, yeah, that's why I wanted to bring it up. So the meeting, I guess, is the week we're going to be doing, so.
We'll be able to push it again at the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, that's all I have for my report. Thank you.
All right, anybody have any questions?
Just wanted maybe, agents want to come in and out of the park meeting in April? You want separate, I can. I have two things, road project and contract.
What, and that's.
The contract, I think we should.
Do you want to do them all apart?
I'm just throwing it out to, coming in an hour early.
Well, the road project's going to take a.
Yeah, the road project, I think we're going to need.
Yeah, I think they'll set up for me.
Yeah, I'm.
All right, send us the dates.
Okay.
Since we're talking about meetings, Jamie, you and I talked about this. And it's raising its, it's raising up again, indigent barriers.
Yeah.
We have a policy that we've imposed since 19, adopted January 7th, 2004. I think we need to revisit this, tweak this up a little. We're, although we had one that didn't go through, so far, we've had two requests for indigent barriers. It's becoming a trend, I guess. And I think we need to have definite tweak this policy. We have opinions from the prosecuting attorney's office that I, that I've received, imperables to other communities. But I think, we said this before, and several things, like what constitutes residency that you're sitting in town, which is very vague, and even our prosecuting attorney tells us that, and define indigent. So we need to discuss those things. And if we come up with a policy, we'll run it by the prosecutor or our legal counsel. It's our policy. So if we determine that what we want to require, as long as it falls with the Highway Advice Code, to define indigent, indigent seat, that they have to tell us. If it's like, they're divestable, their property, whatever it is that we come up with. Because there's a program in that the state allowed us to, or they, they reinstituted that will compensate us up to $1,000 if we could put a request in per barrier. Well, if the cremation was going on, we told 650 and 800, that.
Yeah, so that body, that's.
It doesn't get a clue. If we bury them, if they don't, if somebody doesn't have to take the remains, we bury it. We have to identify it. So there's a process that we have to do in the township according to law. So we have, we have money involved in that. So I think, we talked to somebody in Ashkenyola, it would happen to be that they had something in common with Brookfield about one of these people that were maybe going to, we were going to have to take care of. And they receive 11 a month now. And they, they used to get that, what, a year or every three years? So something happened. So I think that the sooner the better, and we're having meetings. This would be one of the meetings that we decide to investigate and write this, this policy updated. So let's think about that.
Okay, who's the lucky man?
Okay.
I'll do the code report. Code report as of March 3rd. Permission for flat plane owners to go to avenue, the house authority remodel, this is a remodel. And makes auto, build a camp repair also. These are. Not. Violations, South State Line Rover, refrigerator, other debris, yard. Notice violation set on February 12th. Those are making progress. Issues on Rover, maybe a lot of debris. Issues on Rover, maybe a lot of debris. Fourth Street has some trash, and also vehicles. Seven thousand block, South Street firms, night owner, house on Bottom Street, repair, screw, may turn over the health department for condemnation. South State Line Road has some open dump taking place, and the health department is assisting. Third Street has comparable wreck vehicles, there was an SUV, SUV moved, and they're requesting small extension, and people were following up on that. On James Street, a dumping taking place, as well as Brooklyn Avenue, roach free on premises, and construction, new gas station, nine hundred Avenue. Some trampled, trampled soil and water has gone into the runoff issues, and a notice of non-compliance has been sent. That's all we have.
What do you do?
Um, senior manager report for February twenty twenty-five, money collected, thirty-one dollars. Uh, volunteer driver hours donated, yes, nine point two five, and job one, is it strep? Strept, twelve point five, fourteen, fourteen, seven, seven dollars.
I think it's good to look down, receive one, two, three, four, four drivers. We had our drivers up, number our people that you allow now, that's the first time that's happened in a long time. The more we can get, the better, but I thank you all for participating, helping us out.
All right, do you have any other business? Okay, new business, trustees.
Yes. Again, to read this resolution, but I want to discuss a little, did you know we've talked about, there's an injection well company coming in, and wants to put an injection well up at the old radar base, uh, it's Big Mullins Street, which runs off of Route seven here. And we spoke, I spoke at the commissioners meeting again last month, and one of the commissioners, the new commissioners, Commissioner Bernard suggested, he said, do you have a resolution that you're opposed to injection wells in Brookfield Township? And I said, I don't believe we do, and he said, I think it would be a good idea to start with that. They seem to be real willing to cooperate, at least two-thirds of the board, uh, with trying to stop that injection well. So again, we're, we're trying to do a land block, however it is, uh, anything we can do to stop an injection well coming. Something happened over the weekend, well, I just noticed it over the weekend, it happened before, but. I don't know if you're aware, the other injection well that's set down by a trailer park around seven north, right around after COVID, it was, it was kind of, everything stopped, they had one of the wells collapsed, they let that go, and they were, they were working on another one. And then I talked to the, the rep, and he said, well, the market's kind of, because of COVID, the market wasn't good, so they were just going to let it go for a while. Well, I read a real estate transfer paper this weekend, that Highland Energy, who owned it, sold the property out here uh, to a company for one point seven million dollars. They bought the property for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which they thought they spent a lot. My thought is, somebody didn't buy property in Brookfield Township for one point seven million dollars to sell. So something's going to happen there too. It's happened to be a company, I Googled the company, has something to do with, uh, water filtration, injection well. Uh, so I think we need to be concerned about that, so. I would like to enter this resolution in public in opposition to operation and construction injection wells in Brookfield Township. Whereas Brookfield Township Board of Trustees has a responsibility to ensure that the interests and safety of the residents are represented, and whereas oil and gas exploration using the fracking process produces large volumes of wastewater, and whereas this wastewater is transported off-site via tanker truck, often across state line, and disposed of deep into the ground at high pressure through injection wells, and whereas this process can create fractures, cracks in the surrounding rock formations, which can potentially lead to migration of harmful contaminants into the groundwater and surrounding wells used for drinking water sources, and whereas this process can also induce earthquakes, and whereas the wells can leak, sending waste and chemicals into the surrounding environment. And whereas contaminated drinking water and soil, as well as earthquakes, can cause harm to the residents and structures of the township. Now therefore being resolved by the Brookfield Township Board of Trustees, state of Ohio, that this board does hereby oppose any operation and construction of injection wells in Brookfield Township. She had a second. Yeah, that's my motion, sorry.
I just want a couple of discussions, you know, a second. I think tonight Dan brought this together, uh, because there's a lot of debate on it, and probably one of the biggest issues, the township is, because it's fresh, doesn't receive any funding for the, what they put out in the will. State receives it all, I think that's part of the issue too, you know, we have all the liability, and the state takes the money, so. Thank you, Dan, for doing it, and the thank you for potentially taking the commission.
I'd like to elaborate a bit. Uh, when I went to the, I went to the last commissioners meeting, I didn't know that, that Select Water is the company, and, uh, Mr. Ray is the property owner, they were there, I went to present our opposition to the water rate increases. And they came up to speak at the podium, and Commissioner Hernandez, uh, allowed me to speak. And one of the commissioners continues to point out that the property owner is a great neighbor of Brookfield Township. Hey, Ray, he does a lot for Brookfield Township, and that we should be cognizant of that. Well, I don't know what, I know Mr. Rogers' neighbor, if they talk about, would you be my neighbor? They defined it that, but I don't know what constitutes of a neighbor, to me, a good neighbor doesn't come into your prop, into your township and inject in high-pressure poisonous substance underneath where you're all sleeping, and then he goes home and lives in Holland and goes to bed there. It's not a good neighbor to me, so I don't want to get, um, disrespectful in any way, but this is a fight that I'm willing to fight, uh, as long as the, the board allows me to, to represent us, and, um, whatever we can do to stop these companies from coming in, they want to reap, McMullen Road is, if you've ever been by it, it's, it's, it's a challenge, and there's a reason why. And we're going to talk to the, the engineer about the condition of roads, do you wonder why they never did anything in that road? Because it's a road that goes nowhere, it goes up to an old nursing home radar base, there is a tower up there, a radio tower, uh, there's a water tower, and now there's going to, uh, be this Marx radio tower they put in there. Well, that's fine, but this company has agreed, or, or put a proposal to redo the whole road, and, and it's not to benefit the county, it's to benefit the company that wants to inject poison underneath us. And they, they have to put a whole new electrical system in, because they need a three-phase electrical system, they have to go through county's property. It's, I, I keep stressing this, and I stress it every time, when I talk about all the bad things that can happen in injection well, is we have a school that's decided that, that they're putting everything there, they're putting their, their sports facilities, their, their kid, our kids go there and spend six hours a day there, every day. Uh, and it's within a thousand, zero, a thousand feet or a thousand yards of this injection well. It scares me, and this, when this, the next thing that happens, this other company comes in and buys this property, I don't want to be labeled as the dumping ground for them to come from New York or Ohio, where these injection wells, uh, crackings that are going on and bring this stuff and dump it on us. So this is a fight I'm going to fight, um, hard, uh, we fought the last one, I think it was the luck of the draw that they stopped doing it, but I think we have to continue to fight these people.
All right, ready for a little call? Mr. Suddles?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Mrs. Devon? Yes. Thank you again. All right, our fiscal officer, you have the resolution. Um, I'd like to ask the trustees for a motion to pass the annual appropriations resolution, which is basically our budget for the year. I did make some, uh, adjustments to the lighting assessment fund, so that everything that we have is in there, so that it's available in case I need it. Other than that, everything else is the same as, you know, previously that, that we talked. So can you explain that, I guess, because now there's.
Which, which item is that?
Right, so, uh, the last page.
The one back there, it's a thousand, but the lighting, the general fund.
Is that the one?
Are you talking about the forty-four nine? Yeah, yes, so we're in that one. Um, we had a twenty thousand dollar carryover, because we needed to use the water, the general fund to pay, like, for the lighting district. And then we got the increase, so that, the twenty thousand, with the increase of what they gave me, um, came back, and told us we should receive twenty-four thousand, I can't remember the exact amount.
In new money or total?
In new money, so that would give, that, that comes forty thousand dollars, which is pretty much what it. Was you say, last year, what, it was forty-three thousand?
So does that include the ten thousand from the eighty, if you grant?
Yes, yes.
So that's one thousand.
Right.
So the, the only one on the back, the first page, the general fund, one thousand, yeah, street ten, that ten thousand, is that part of the forty-four?
Uh, one. Uh, yes, that was, that ten thousand there, that is.
Okay, it's, yeah, they don't say AP, but it says general fund.
Yeah, that, but that is what I am leaving a little to the general fund in case I have to.
So you may not need that.
Right.
We did raise, uh, the rates twenty-five percent, because they haven't raised in twelve years.
Right.
So our goal is to break even, or slightly, slightly ahead. Taking money from the general fund, so.
And just so you know, for the, you know, we, we raised lighting, the lighting districts, there's, there's eight of them. And I had somebody call me because they were concerned, and this is just one of the lighting districts, they're, they're all rated differently, it depends on how many lights there are, how many residents are sharing the price. But this person's assessment for the lights went up two dollars and eighty-eight cents per year, so it's a dollar forty-four per act. So, it wasn't drastic, I understand, you know, it's going up, but that's, that's what it went up at, twenty-five percent in that one.
Which is, for twelve years, isn't too bad, and not only that, I know for all of this year, some houses, for whatever reason, aren't assessed a lighting charge, because we're turning the counties, we're going to look at those to try to make that fun solve. More possible ways, I'm, for whatnot, I'm going to take ten thousand dollars off our general fund if you pay for that. When people are getting service, you pay double fees, and we're going to make that forward, that is chance, I would start looking some areas, so. If that's good news, we're going to be hopefully breaking even, but thank you.
All right, I have a question, the cemetery, cultural charity fund, is that the star fund? No. Okay, no, because I've got to stay up here, because I have six hundred bucks, so what is that? That is a, it's, yeah, it's been there long before I started. And nothing is ever, it's never really paid money, how much money was in it, um, when I got there, the same exact amount, you see.
But that used, that was, somebody put money into the pot, that.
It's another savings account, that one time. Something I did.
But the interest was used to put flowers on certain graves, there was a list of graves. It worked years ago because the interest it earned would, would generate enough money to pay for the flowers, and then it got to the point where it didn't earn enough money to pay for the flowers, not all the flowers, so. It just kind of stopped with the flowers on, it was a lot of damage. They don't do those requests anymore because of that reason.
Is that star fund somewhere? No. That would not appear on it, never. Nice, but, you know, any, um, pool money that we have.
Just, uh, just a comment, I'd like to thank, uh, Deanna, this is kind of this hours, every department heads, and my fellow trustees, we spent a lot of time last week, so going over each department, virtually line by line, talking about expenditures from personnel to equipment to electricity and garbage, anything where their expenditures go out, and revenue sources, so, uh, you know, it's, it's a very detailed act, and something that one of the people at Dana, named Joe, is the partner most of those meetings, so, they're very thorough, very detailed, and, uh, very specific account of every nickel that we bring in, we spent, so. I guess my comment is, we made a commitment to meet again, if this is approved, uh, three or four months from now, to kind of do a bigger evaluation on how the accounts stand, and, uh, I'm going to, it's, I turned on the notebook, but, uh, even though every item, there's items listed in here, at that point, when we make a decision to purchase something, uh, you need to reflect on it. You know, we, we have a lot going on in the coming year, some of these are pretty big expenditures. My personal belief that just because we approve it tonight, uh, at least, this is me speaking, doesn't mean Paul's going to buy it in the upcoming year, when our, your budget changes, hopefully upon, but, uh, and thank you for everyone involved, it's a lot of work, and, uh, thank you.
This is a six point seven million dollar budget, so, why, after, if you look at the school board, that's, that's a fraction of what you're existing, like, no, you're. But that's, that's a big, big budget, and, uh, it, there was a lot of work, and I think this is the first time that I can remember, I've only been a trustee for seven years, that this much discussion was had on budget, all departments, and all elected officials. It was, it was a, a learning process in a couple areas, and, and it also was, I, I feel like exactly what trustee Ferrer said, we know what's going on for the year, this is a start, and we're going to have a meet, we're also going to have a meeting halfway, so that we can make sure that what percentage we add six months in, or whatever month is, so that we can make sure everyone's on budget and make corrections if we have to.
One thing just happened, uh, there were a lot of people around the team who was talking about this, he's been here, like, thirty-two years, or thirty? He kind of, he, he made a comment, I find it joking, he said, you know, at one point, his carryover from the next previous year to the next was fifty-six dollars, and I said, what? Fifty-six dollars for, what, six hundred thousand dollar budget, that's kind of pretty close. It's kind of really close, fifty-six dollar carryover, so.
Uh, thank you again, uh, we're going to continue to replace this as we move forward, and again, even though we have the money in those accounts, if we're not able to buy, thank you, for whatever reason, uh, we'll have more discussions the year goes on.
All right, so we need a second, correct? Well, for your.
Question? I should say, I don't remember.
Yeah, we have, uh, we're in discussion.
Do you want this as the whereas, or?
Well, we could do that, and I can, this is the formal copy.
So we read all this or this?
Uh, you can do where.
Okay, all right, whereas. I move for the adoption of the following resolution, M twenty-five dash, so it, you're, sorry, forty-six. So it be so resolved by the Board of Trustees, Brookfield Township, Trumpville County, Ohio, that to provide for the current expenses and other expenditures of said Board of Trustees during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, the following sums be and the same are hereby set aside and appropriated for the several purposes for which the expenditures are to be made for during the fiscal year, and it says, I was follows, but I do not want to read it. This is, this is public record, anybody wants it?
I think you should read every line.
Okay. I said, I think you should, I said you're asked.
Oh, second.
Any questions?
And I need a little comment.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Mr. Suddles?
Yes.
And Mrs. Devon? Yes.
Thank you for everything.
All right, uh, anybody have any public comments? Well, I can't see past the black, I apologize, go ahead, Steve, I'm sorry.
I'm at an injection, uh, site, uh, right seven, okay. It said Brookfield Center from South of Carlos Park, okay. Western right seven, it's all a shell, some string. Uh, west of Route seven, it's all shale, some straight, okay. When they were putting the sewer line in, uh, on Grove Street, between the two sides of Route seven. I looked down in there, about two foot deep, there were shale in there, at the time my seat for fire went, and it, it was cold, okay. Um, but it was muddy and I didn't get down there with a bucket. They got the coal, but, uh, on the school, the south, south of the athletic field. That entire hillside is, is nothing but stacks of shale, okay, it's about this thick. When they were putting in the school project, okay, and the civil engineer looked in Portland and looked south and said everything, find a Brookfield. Okay, they had one four inch drag pipe under there, it's some, you know, horse grit rock. When I showed it to them, eh, well, I would get to a long list, but this is ten, twelve years ago. I showed it to them, they ended up digging, I think it's about ten foot wide, correct? They put four six inch pipes in there, in the building, it's, it's, it's that much horse grit rock. And, uh, then they ran the, uh, the pipe down to the, to parking lot, okay. Now, this is the way the engineers do, if you look at that ball field, okay, the civil engineer, the same one I'm talking about, forget his name. You look at the ball field, that pile of dirt that left. And the higher revised, uh, higher building, called building thing, you know, school building thing, they call that topsoil, it's still, okay. The way they grew it, it's that brachy sort. But I mean, to put that hillside thirty foot each, it had natural grade. When he graded that, he was a pipe operator, he was an excellent equipment operator. He's riding, uh. The dowsers sideways. So, he graded it a lot, but, uh, I mean, that shale, if there's something happens, I mean, when. They start drilling, and when they get fifty foot below, uh, the level of the school. That, all those places, that's, they're, they're mine, okay.
Yeah.
And the fire department, they know all about that. But, uh, I mean, it's, uh, those things should be anywhere near a hospital, a restaurant, a school, anywhere with identity population. Period, I mean, common sense.
Yeah, thank you, you made good points. No more.
Judy, um, that resolution about the injection wells, would the property up on seven, would that be grandfathered in and exempt from that?
Well, we're opposing it, here, here's the thing, it's, it's, they're functioning. We, to be honest with you, we can't do anything to stop an injection well, they know that.
Okay.
Uh, but this is showing our position, the commissioner's gonna help us in this process, they asked us to do that. Um, I don't want to say it's not worth too much, but it's just, it, it, it can't stop them from putting it in, it's, we're going on record, we're opposed to it, that's it. Thanks.
Um, this is for the, I, my business is on Cherry Street, it's an undedicated, uh, road, it's a dirt road. Jamie, your guys come down last year, the, they said they're gonna come down and improve the road, but not to county specs, like resurface or something. Had some millings dropped off, uh, the, the road is impassable, it's exceeded, it's time to, it's time to, to do something with this road. There's a new business coming in, it's gonna be Lynn's Daycare, uh, they bought RP's old property, you know, here we go, we got another business coming into township, but we got a road that is in shambles. Whether, uh, business owners as myself, um, and everybody else on that road, what do we need to do to get it to county specs? Through, to, through the county, I've heard this year after year after year, um, there's nothing going on at our road. Um, we need something done, and I understand it's undedicated, but what do we gotta take the, do all the footwork to try to get it improved? Um, or is it something that you do, you know, you guys are going to the county meetings? And on the other flip side of this, I want to know, um, why the school district, Brookfield and Hubbard, they're, they're gonna use this road in and out every single day and in the past.
Is that for the daycare members?
Yes, now there's, there's other businesses down there, you know, that, you have, uh, Dr. Ray and, uh, Dr. Jones right on the corner.
Yeah, they're on the road for that, right on seven rounds.
Yeah. And there's been multiple times when, uh, trustee Gary Lees was on, on, uh, board, that I've called to say, there's children slipping under a bus. Because the bus can't get up that road, and I get it, it's undedicated for salt and it's a dirt road. What do we need to do as a community to look for and to bring new businesses into this township and have a resolution to do something? And here we go, we get, you know, next year we're gonna try to do something, next year, next year, and I get it, everybody in this township that works for the township is, works hard. But why do, why are we gonna need to call EMTs to come pick up a little kid because we don't have the funds or the means to say to the county, let's get this road improved? A little kid is gonna fall under this bus one day, and that's my, my thing is, I've, I've seen it in the past, the safety. And my employees coming out of Cherry Street to Route seven, sliding or hitting a, a, you know, a pothole, what can we do to move this forward?
Have the grindings helped?
Uh, just the quarter potholes, I mean, up above, but it's, it is so bad and Jamie knows it, I mean, you guys have been doing a good job, uh.
Do you want to talk about?
Yeah.
Pushing the snow when it, you know, the, you know, when it needs done, and it's a cost to the township on the, the plow trucks, I mean. It's, it's horrible.
The, the, it's a, it's a, just to clarify the term, it's a dedicated but unacceptable.
Unaccepted, yes.
So there's two steps in there, it's been dedicated for public use, but not accepted by the county commissioners for, to become a maintained road by the township trustees. Well, I think we put, we took millings down there last year, but that road is, that road is partially paved at the end, so. You can't put millings over top, but that stuff just slides around, you fill the holes and it slides, but. If you want to get it, if you want to get it accepted, Briesel Lake Drive did it many years ago, and I think you have the, you still have money in the account for that. But, uh, it would require the property owners to go to the, they have to hire an engineer, do the engineering. Present that to the trustees, and then the trustees will take it to the county engineer, have them review it, and then they would be assessed the cost to have it improved. That's the, that's the surefire way to get it done, um.
But I don't want to interrupt you.
Go ahead, no.
Is this not, this was one of the twenty roads?
This is one of the.
That we were going to improve in the twenty-year plan, correct? So that, does that still need to be done, or can we?
You still, well, no, the assessment, you still have to go through the same process, but if you're not gonna assess the property owners, then you gotta take it out of your own pot, so.
Yeah, that's our plan, is part of that twenty-year plan, we just passed the three, but the only thing is, you want that road done first, so does the other twenty roads. So we just have to look at travel on that road, the condition of the road, how many, uh, businesses, properties is going, and we kind of rely on Jamie to help us, guide us down that, that, which roads are first, but. Part of, our plan is that you wouldn't have to be assessed as a property owner.
I'm okay being assessed.
Well, we don't, I, I believe you're already been assessed, you're paying taxes.
Yes.
So, if, if we can do that, I, I can't speak for that, I'd rather, but it's gonna have to be on our terms.
Yeah, we, we, we've talked about it, that's something we'll talk about the road program, we gotta develop a, uh. A procedure for which roads are gonna be first, but we can't do, there's twenty of them, we can't do them all in one year.
We thought we'd do one a year, I thought that was the plan.
That was kind of the thought, do one year, and like he said, based on the ADT, the average daily traffic, the houses, the commercial businesses, the, the safety, as Jay talked about, the safety of it. And then I think there's some other, there's some other things, you may have to go to the property owners' board, you're gonna have driveway pipes, I mean, some of that stuff, I think you, you might have to ask the property owners to pay. You know, because you've got individual driveways that, that are.
Which is a common, right?
No, it's not a common at all, but there's lots of roads that have.
You have to accept that, that's, that's kind of what, where everybody's really on this now and, you know, I just met the new business owners and they're, they're doing another daycare, they have daycare in Hubbard. You know, the, it's time, we, you know, we have a new, another new business coming into the township, and we have a lot of families gonna be coming back to that same spot. And the school district, I mean, I, that's why I've been preaching, you guys know, I, I preach since I bought that building. And I understand this, the, there, there's ways of going about this, but now that there's funds and the buses are getting beat up, these little children are getting beat up. Pulling in into a bumpy road, a unsafe road, who, who wants that in our community? Nobody.
No, I'm watching Jay, but, uh, trust me, we got, it's Cherry Street, we got a lot of roads.
I understand that.
We spent, in the last two years, we spent, what, three million dollars? So, we did a lot of roads.
Okay, uh, uh, you know, I, I get that, but it's time, we have money, there's, that's the prior, I want, I came here to speak, again, I ha, I haven't really said too much. I just want to see something done and like sooner than later, because it's always been later. And now there is a lot of children gonna be coming in there because of, from what, you know, the new daycare owners, they are really good people and they're gonna be bringing a lot more families in there. And I cannot believe the school district hasn't said nothing about the maintenance of their buses getting beat up there too.
So I, well, and, and later, when you say, we've always talked about, we have, but, uh, remember, we just passed the levy.
And getting the money, the funds.
To have any funds.
I understand that.
And those roads weren't, weren't planned to be done without the funding, so we just got the funding, so it's gonna take, it's gonna take a little while to implement a while.
On the twenty roads that you have, there, um, that is in my state of disrepair right now, okay? Can you tell me what other, what road is more important than the children?
That's what I was gonna say, we are, we have a meeting, we have a discussion of a meeting with Jamie to go over everything, because we have to shift around the, the paving program anyway. Because we're ahead of, um, years, yeah, ahead of the target, so that is in the works, and we just discussed it at a department head meeting, you go through with the criteria, we have not done yet that yet. Last year we paved twenty-eight roads, it was absolutely nuts. So together as a board, we're gonna sit down, we're gonna go over everything, and I guarantee you, we'll start to come up with a formula there to get that conversation going, but we have not had a chance to catch our breath in the last two years with this new incoming money. So, it's on the radar, I promise you, my kid used to go to daycare, I, I'm well aware of how that all works, we're gonna sit down and talk and review everything, so, it's on the radar.
You gotta realize, with all due respect, that when you say what's more important than a kid, that's probably not a fair assumption. All these people that have the, they have the same concerns you do, they're just not here tonight. The fact that you're here and I appreciate it, we have to look at the big picture of all the roads, not just based on somebody that's coming with concern, we know, we know, you've been to many meetings about the kids, we understand all that and we appreciate it. But everybody that's on, on an undedicated road probably has the same thought, why not me? So we have to look at the big picture, we have to look at all of those.
Sure.
So how would that work, the bus pulling the lot, dropping the kids off, or where, where?
Well.
They pull in, they go up the hill, which is usually an icy slope, and into the parking lot.
So the bus drops the kids off in the parking?
When it's bad out, yes, and I, I mean, that's, that's the hard part, is that little hill, and then, I mean.
Yeah, that's all.
And then when you get down there, like the new plow truck you guys, I think you got, you know, when it come down, it. I mean, it's beating the equipment, it's not.
We're on the same page.
We're, we're, we're on the same page. The old, the old policy was when they got, when the roads got to that point, we had, wow, that was the old policy.
That's what we moved forward from.
Yeah, so we don't got.
We're on the same page, it's just gonna take us some time.
Yeah, we can, we can put some milling on the end, but like I said, that, that, beginning of that part is paved, so that milling is just gonna fill in the hole, it can't really go over the pavement, so, you know, that's something we'll have to.
Something, so. Yeah, so basically all I'm asking for is, you know, if, if, if we can't get it improved, can we hit the grader and scarf all that junk off and put the, the new gravel down? That's a, that's, that's a better step.
That grader, just, you beat the shit out of that grader trying to scarf that.
Okay, I mean, what are you gonna do, do it, I mean, what, what do we gotta do, we gotta get a resolution?
We'll, we'll work on it.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're not gonna figure it out tonight, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll work on it.
But again.
Thank you.
You know, we just, we just got the funds, so, you know, we're trying to work on getting some of the roads done. There's only four guys in the road department, so we can't.
And I know last year was a hard year because, I mean, you guys finished it up the road, I, I get it, it's just that I'm here just to voice my opinion to.
Well, the good thing is, like you said, we have funds to do it.
Yes.
Otherwise, you know, imagine where we would be. Thank you, any, any other questions?
Anybody else? Alright, meetings, um, we discussed two.
We're not gonna go to trustee's comments.
No, trustee's comment, I checked it, now let's pay attention, I am so sorry. Trustee's comments.
Uh, I still love them. I did want to point out, in case you didn't know, that we have a new app, it's called Mike Brookfield, um, did a check with the, uh, GoGolf people. We have six hundred and twenty-four people that have downloaded the app, uh, five hundred fifty-six Apples, iPhones and sixty-eight Androids, but, uh. We're trying to get the word out, we did mailing in the schools, internet processes, we're mailing in the schools, I don't know if they've all gone out yet, did flyers at every kid. But if you do that, it's a free app, it's called Mike Brookfield, there's a postcard over there, it has a QR code that you just have to take a picture with your phone and it'll download it for you. The thing, I think the best thing about the app is a notification process where, we even tried to do it although we were behind a little bit because I didn't get to the exact time. When the school, we're on a two-hour delay, we put it on the app to, so it pops across, if you're signed up, you'll get any notification that you want to get it, let you pick and pick. It's no emergencies, if we have a crime scene, which we didn't do the other day, but I did know what Aaron wanted to do, uh, stay clear of this area, there's something going on, sometimes that's, you don't want to push that out because some people go to that area. But, um, it's been meant to keep you in the loop, you as township residents, keep you informed of what's going on and try to, so, a lot of times, um, you'll hear about, they'll, they'll come on a boil alert because there's a water outbreak. You don't know if it affects your area, we're gonna be able to do all that, so, um, please, it's free. Uh, the only way to be successful is if you, our residents, have it in your hands, so if you're into that, that thing, please, uh, do that. The other thing I want to talk, we had a first talk with a trustee, uh, we usually do it all in warm weather, or that we, the, the library has offered the use of their, uh, facility, and we did it last Saturday. We had seven or eight people there, we had a good discussion, um, it's an informal process where everyone knows what the meetings are about, but. Where you can, you know, you're not in a meeting setting like this and we can just talk about issues you might have, and, uh, there's donuts, so, hang on, so, it was, yeah. It was, uh, it was, I think it was, anytime we get one, two people there, it's only because Joe and the guy from the hair, we went to. It was, uh, it was, I think it was, anytime we get one, two people there, it's only 'cause Joe and the guy from the Herald wanted to. It's a good meeting, so we had, we had a good meeting, we got some things discussed, so.
Correct, I don't wanna do this.
All right.
Um, I'm gonna go to meetings next. Uh, we had talked, like, before, two department head meetings ago, I think, uh, with the fire chief, after we kinda got the budget and everything figured out, and discussion of fire trucks or all that stuff. Are we headed down that path now, or?
I thought we, I don't know, are we chief, are we going to look at both those items now? Are you gonna do one and think of one mid-year? What is your thoughts?
Well, I was waiting for the budget to get approved, I haven't, uh, I think the priority is definitely looking at it soon.
Like, like Mark said, we had that money that was budgeted, but it doesn't mean we're gonna spend it, but I think we should. The sooner the better, the talk, first of all, your priority, which you just kinda, it's ambulance, fire truck. And then move, if it's fire truck, it just, and you said the time to come down, I just see the pole and, uh, five fire truck-
Three years.
Three years, yeah.
Three years.
They just had it on the news, they were pushing it in the station, like, three years.
I, I have been talking with vendors, as we discussed a couple months ago, and, uh, the, uh, I, I just spoke with the vendor that I'm interested in this past weekend. And, uh, again, on a first, first serve basis, but our truck will be here by July, as of right now.
What you want, not a, not a compromise?
Right, no, we're, we want what we need.
Did you call your price?
Yeah, I have a price.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you want-
Sitting down there.
Anyway, it was up, I know we left the ball in your court, I just wanted to bring it up, 'cause we set out to the budget, we just approved the budget, so if you tell us-
Let me, uh, let me, uh, do some research, and I'll reach out to you next week and get it set up. Your schedule meetings, so.
Perfect.
Yeah.
And then, Jamie, I had you down for, we need to still talk, we brought it up earlier, but the road discussion, I wanna repost the list and kinda get those things together, so keep that in the back, we're gonna have two meetings. And then, uh, before June, we have to discuss the lighting, 'cause that second half could be due. So we need to set up a meeting with Sammy Super, Laura, Laura?
Yeah, she, she's more than willing to commit.
Okay, so-
The heavy lifting's on our part.
Yeah, what I thought, and I don't know if you guys are okay with it, but maybe do half the township and then the second half, 'cause there's, there's thousands of parcels to go through. At least give her the first half that I found so far, but-
Do you think you've got half the township, half the lighting district? You already got that?
If I do before June, I can do the half.
Oh, okay, I thought you said you had half already.
No, I, well, I have three districts done, the one, the small, yeah, the easier digestible ones, but the, the big one is gonna take a minute. So that was it.
All right, well, if you're gonna take meetings, I, I wanna pin one, one, I, I wanna, Jamie, you got the second one in two weeks, energy barrels. Jamie, next week, uh, what is today, the third? Uh, next week, we have, what's good for all of us next week? Let's pin one Monday, that we at least, we can talk about things other than energy barrels, but I, I'd like to get into that.
Wednesday would be good for me.
As of now, I don't have my calendar for it, but I should.
It's the-
The twelfth.
Twelfth is, you have it on your phone.
No, I have a paper calendar.
Okay, uh, Wednesday to twelve, Jamie, would that work?
Uh, yeah, I don't have it.
Dana, could you be available on Wednesday?
Uh, yeah, Wednesday.
All right, where do you wanna do it, Jamie, what time?
Uh, you're talking for energy barrels.
At least, if we conduct energy barrels and other road department issues,
There you go.
And that way the meeting can be a little wide, but the, as long as everyone's priorities is getting a new policy for this energy-
We're doing it here.
Yeah.
Here, and, uh, whatever time's good for you guys.
Ten?
Ten to ten o'clock.
You wanna, so ten o'clock?
Ten, one.
Do you wanna schedule that, Shannon, or do you want me to with, uh, Tyler?
You can schedule it.
All right. It's the twelve.
Yep.
Yes. Road issues, well. At ten o'clock.
So we said, we, you said indig- indigent-
Indigent barrels and other road department issues.
Perfect. Okay.
Okay, um, one other thing, I, I know it's a term here, if you, you have any, you're gonna schedule any meetings right now? I did talk to, uh, a lot of things have been going on with electrical aggregation, and those of you that had to be in the county's program somehow, which shouldn't have been, it was good to work for a couple of years, our rate is lower now. I talked to our representative, uh, from Aspen Energy, his name's Jay Sell. And I signed a paper the other day that we can start looking, our, our, we have a fifteen month, which ends in July, uh, contract with them, at your present rate is point five nine seven five, which is slightly under six cents a kilowatt hour. He's going to look, we have to wait a little closer, we have to be within two months of when it expires before we can either sign an extension or agree to our next, we can contract. But he cautioned me that expect the rates to be in a neighborhood of nine cents, uh, per kilowatt hour, that's a deal. Uh, and, and when you know, and I've learned through the whole process of this electric aggregation, it's, it's run, it's, it's like the stock market, oil, oil, gas, electric utilities, they're up and down, they trend. We, we get this guy, and he did real good in the last three cycles, we did a three here, a three here, and fifteen month. Uh, we were all, we were a little bit higher in Chumel County last time, uh, but they're much higher than us this time, so. He's gonna start looking, but he cautioned me to pass on to my fellow trustees that it's gonna be a little sticker shot. And I said to him, I'd rather see seven cents than nine, and he said, well, okay. But, uh, that's what we, I told him, we need to look all long and hard, because we're not gonna, we're not gonna jump on the first thing that comes, but your electrical, the other end of it, from the consumption end, from Ohio Edison, I'm sure you already noticed an increase, it's gone up, I, I believe it's, it's twelve cents?
Twelve cents.
Whatever it is, that's on the consumption side, and then you have the supply side, there's two of the sides of your bill. But be prepared, but we're going to, uh, really have him chasing as much as he can to get us a good rate, so that's, that'll be coming up here, uh, prior to July.
Okay. Are you ready?
I'm, so.
I'm making motion here.
I'll second.
Entertainment.
So I take a second.
I agree.
Yes, you're the one who mentioned Vegas, we dropped off. Okay.
I should press.
I, I gotta keep this one, I'm telling you.
What's your issue? No.
So what do I do?
Need to go back, connect that.
Yeah, you're a handkerchief, it's just, I mean. I'd like to cover it. Yeah. Um, I would like, I was gonna ask you, if you could turn off the channel?
Yeah.
You're one of those that's a bad girl.
Yeah.
That's it. We'll leave you there, we'll stop you.
Yeah, we'll continue.
Wait, dude, I had somebody ask me, you guys are residents, so. So, thank you, whatever, you know, you know what you're reading.
I'm not, I'm waiting for the things on my speech.
Yeah.
Say she's from there.
Yeah, there you go. But today's, uh, it's good. I'm, I just, it's not my team, they don't, my baby. What's happening, Steve?
All right. So another meeting.
That's important.